Committee of the whole for Tuesday, September 17, 2019, to order with roll call, please.
You got fine?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Weinhammer?
Here.
Bets?
Here.
Collier?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll now move to the public comment portion of the committee meeting. Is there anybody here would like to address the committee of the whole before we get started? Nothing? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at 6:26. A first item up for discussion is discussing the number of video terminals allowed per establishment. As you all know, the state of Illinois just signed into law that they're going to allow six gaming terminals per establishment as opposed to the existing five. And the village of Cary being proactive and trying to get ahead of things, we just want to make sure that we're going to figure out what the board wants to do. So we're gonna have a discussion on if anybody has any interest in increasing it to six or keeping it at five. Let's see where that goes and that way we can give staff some direction when establishments, because we are having establishments ask us now if we're going to be allowing it. So anybody have any questions or concerns about allowing a sixth gaming terminal?
I think once it's here, it's here. So let's add one more. If we've already said it can be there.
Right.
I don't, I don't see the difference. I would say, I don't have a problem with adding a sixth one.
I agree.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Kim?
Yeah, I like, I'm good with the five, but I, I see what you're saying. I do. I guess just at what point do you stop, though? You know, is it 10?
Kind of question.
What is that threshold? I mean, I'm fine with six, I guess, especially if majority of the board...
What are we gonna do if the state says 10 next year?
Yeah.
Well, that, that, I, it's funny, Jake and I talked about that. We, you know, that, at that particular time, I think that we would probably get into a physical structure issue and what the ordinance is gonna be, how it's going to be contained and then what our board would like to see how it would be done. Because when we first introduced this to the village, we kinda had to open it up to everybody. And then we could be more restrictive once everybody decided what they were gonna do. And then we decided that we wanted it off, you know, separate room where no one else can see it. And, you know, those are things I believe that we can do at a later time. But I think a majority of the establishments now would like to see a sixth terminal.
Are we gonna look at the, the ones that have the five ready or ask for six if they have to relocate machines and change things? Does that change anything or not really?
I, I think that would be up to the proprietor to figure out how it would physically fit in their location. And that would be up to them. I mean, that would be a decision they would have to make.
Right.
I know that there are some that are more tighter than others.
Yeah, look at Orchard Meats. I don't see them being able to get another one in there, no matter what. It's a smaller area.
Well, he only has three, so I think he's the only one that has three.
So that's, that is a good point, though, because what if it does completely change the aesthetics? What, you know, any of these, let's say all of a sudden now they're in the back corner, kind of off the side, but to gain them more space, they decide to relocate them to the front and they're first thing you see. Well, when we approved it, we kinda based it off of what they gave us. So if they did do that, they wouldn't have to come back before the board, would they? Or would they?
We, we complete inspections out there before they put it in. And we do have some language in our existing ordinance that I believe restricts them from being visible from the exterior of the, of the building. So there is some language that's in our ordinance right now. What the board could consider too is how we structure this. I mean, our, if we bring this forward for an ordinance for the board to approve, right now we're seeing not more than five machines. We can specifically say the same thing of not more than six machines. And if the, I think it was you that made that point of what if they go to 10? The board could review that at, at that time and just say six is the limit for now and we'll review that at a later time.
Well, so if you bring forth the ordinance for six then, can we add something in there about that that's possible as long as it doesn't significantly like change where the machines are located? Like some sort of language in there that assures us that those machines would stay? You know, when we originally approved their gaming license, we approved it based on what we were looking at.
Yeah.
Can we add some language in there about that to just give us some assurances?
It's somewhat of a, of a delicate balance because some businesses, maybe they wanna rearrange their whole interior to accommodate the gaming machines and it, it becomes favorable to what we're looking for. And they're hidden. So it is one of those that we do kinda have a delicate balance with that.
But we, we have something in there right now that says they have to be hidden. That there has to be some way that they can monitor it so that, you know, anyone below a certain age can't get in there, correct?
And they can't be visible from the street.
Correct. So even if they make a change, if we have the ordinance, that language in there, we're, I mean, I wanna make sure with, because I'm with Kim on the same issue, we're, they can't change that. They can't just, you know, literally say, well, you know, we decided we're gonna just put them all up front now. They would still have to be not visible and stuff.
Correct.
Okay, because we definitely wanna keep that in there, I would think.
Well, you just gotta remember, we had a broad, we weren't as restrictive at the beginning because you couldn't have been. So now we are more restrictive. So moving forward, they would have to comply, I believe.
And I, I think most of the businesses too have, have been satisfied
Right.
with, that have it hidden right now, have been satisfied with their businesses having that, the gaming hidden.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Right. And it does have to be segregated from, in any establishment where minors are present or can be present in the restaurant or whatever the establishment is, it has to be segregated by a physical barrier and continuously monitored by an adult.
Would we be able to put any language in there that says, if you wanna go to six, you still have to come before us and present your plans, you know, and we vote on it, yes or no, if we think it's appropriate? Or are we just saying, yes, we're gonna go to six and then everybody scurries and puts in another machine? You know, and then, then later we find out, oh, that doesn't, you know, that's not meeting what we really wanted. Can we say if you wanna increase it, then you have to show us you have a plan to maintain the standards that we have in place?
Especially if it alters the existing.
I would, to that, I would, might recommend is that we review to staff level. And if there's significant, significant changes to the existing layout, then that may trigger a review at the board level. But if it's, you know, consistent with how they're laid out now and it's just the room has five and they can add the sixth machine there, then I don't think there's a need to have it reviewed at this board. It's just an extra step for them, the business to go through. But I do understand your concern from that perspective. If there's a significant change, then I think it would make sense to, you know, have that potentially reviewed forward for that modification.
But I, I think it, from what I'm hearing, though, some of these businesses are making a considerable amount of money off of their gaming machines alone. And so if they wanted one, I, I don't think they would see it as such a hardship to have to come before us and say this is what we're looking at.
Sure.
I mean, I know one making over a hundred thousand, I think, a year, just off of the gaming machines.
Yeah. I, I think, as Director Simmons stated, staff has a pretty good understanding of the board's expectations for this. We'll work with, it, it sounds like the board is generally supportive of this going to six as, as long as, you know, people aren't putting these right out, out front, kinda keeping existing conditions. So we'll work to put together an ordinance here for the village board to consider at a later date. And to your point, Trustee Kraus, it is something that we need to look at here just from a liquor license perspective of, as we evaluate the liquor licenses in these establishments that have gaming, are the rates that we're charging for liquor license appropriate? Are they too high, too low?
Okay, that's good.
And I, I guess I would add, if, if your experience, if you're gonna add a sixth terminal or it's going to be allowed, if your experience in visiting one of the local restaurants, one of the local bars, is one where you want to visit new regulations regarding the location of the machines, you can always do that. I mean, you're, you're not telling them they can't have the machine. I think what you're suggesting is there may be a need to, to have a tighter set of regulations about what they look like inside the facility. So you don't lose that authority by authorizing the sixth terminal. So you, you may see some of these and say, wait a minute, that isn't exactly what we were envisioning.
Okay, so we'll let staff come up with, everybody in agreement to that? Well, you know, we'll go through the, you know, if we have to bring it back to the committee, we could do that. But we'll just have that on items for separate action at a future board meeting. So everybody can have an opportunity to weigh in on it.
There isn't any rush with this at all. We've been receiving a few calls and wanted to bring it forward to the village board for discussion, so.
Well, I like the, I like that we're being proactive, though. To me, that's smart. It doesn't take effect till January. Let's look at it now.
Well, isn't this active right now?
It is, it's effective now?
It was effective now, okay.
Okay, then.
The, the next item is.
Next item. Now moving to recreational cannabis.
All right, Mayor Village Board, we had talked about recreational cannabis at our August 20th Committee of the Whole meeting. There, the village attorney had laid out the existing legislation here that's been approved by the state. As previously stated, this is effective January 1 of 2020. So we had good discussion at our last meeting, had folks on kinda both sides of the table here wanting to bring it back to get just a general consensus of how the, the board may feel. Wanted to allow you to digest the information, ask any questions. So what we're looking for tonight, would like some more guidance here from the village board of, are you interested in allowing recreational cannabis within the village of Cary? And we posed a couple of questions here, too. So if that is the, the case, would you like to restrict by zoning district? I've heard some, from some village board members that we may wanna restrict it, not allow it in V1, which is our downtown zoning district. Hours of operation currently right now, there are state requirements and those hours are included in the village attorney's presentation. Proximity to certain, excuse me, certain land uses. We created a map here that shows.
Brian, do you have, do you have the map? Can you pull that up? Okay. I think the map, I think we need to delve into that so you can, so everybody has an understanding where it can go.
Yep. This is put together by staff of, if we're interesting, interested in restricting it from certain land uses. This includes buffer around churches, schools, and existing daycares, I believe, as well. That is an option for the village board to consider. Do we wanna prohibit it in residential areas? Do we wanna limit the number of dispensaries? Do we just wanna allow one within the village of Cary? And so those are some of the questions that we'd like to have, just some general guidance about. Here, moving forward, we would then like to work with our village attorney, have this go before the zoning board for their review before it finally comes back to the village board.
My first question is the yellow on the map that we have marked out on here. Is that by the state statue of 1,000 feet right now? Is that what that dictates or is that just showing?
Yeah, the, the map exhibit that you have shows both locations of the zoning districts. And then the yellow circles are basically the heat map, if you will. It's 1,000 feet from a property that's using one of those uses. So if you look at Goddard Daycare School over on Georgetown, 1,000-foot radius of that site almost eliminates most of the commercial area that's on Three Oaks Road and Kever Drive. Okay. And certainly that 1,000-foot distance is currently within the medical cannabis. You said, I believe that's a requirement of the recreational cannabis. But if we wanted to have that sort of restriction, this would show what the limits of that would be as far as areas that are currently zoned, either commercial, the B2 or B3, or industrial, the M districts, what properties would be eliminated if you were to implement that sort of restriction?
I mean, just as a point of reference, it's, it's pretty clear on this legend that we're going to be isolated to be really just on the Route 14 corridor, kind of over by Three Oaks as well, that would be, that would meet the, the current state criteria. And if, that's how I understand it, we could be even more restrictive if we choose. But these are the, the standards set up by the state. We can always be more restrictive. If you wanted to make it 1,500 feet, or if you wanted to make it 1,200 feet, you could do that as well.
And to point out too, just from the, discuss the map briefly, yeah, majority of the properties are along Route 14 or Industrial Drive, the industrial zone districts. Just because if you're looking at this map, doesn't indicate that a property owner would allow that use to go in there. Generally, there would be, you know, the party, you know, from a property ownership standpoint or even other tenants that are in the shopping center may need to sign off on that use to go into that center. So even if a property does allow it in this map, there may be a tenant in that shopping center that would have deed restriction or a right of first refusal before another operator can go into that facility. So they may not sign off on that use going in there, even if the property owner is willing to participate in that. Another leasing in the center could restrict that use from going in.
So according to the, the map that we have here in front of us, the yellow would be restricted areas.
Correct.
Everything else that's in color would be allowed?
Correct.
That, that's what we're proposing. The yellow is what the village of Cary is proposing. I'd like to have the village attorney.
Just the 1,000 feet.
Attorney clarify that. And that's what the state is requiring it currently?
Yeah.
So, well, no.
Not for the recreational cannabis. So if a medical cannabis facility were to move in within our jurisdiction, this map would apply to that, about restrict where medical cannabis can go. Under the recreational cannabis, which was just passed, that it was in effect January 1st, there is no restriction that the state is recommending. We can, if we wanted to adopt similar recommendation, restrictions to 1,000-foot radius, similar to the medical cannabis, this is what would.
We, we are proposing this as an, as an option.
So the state has restrictions in place for the medical marijuana, but not the recreational?
Correct.
Right. And the reason, there's a reason for that, for, under the, the, I forget the name, the Compassionate Care Act that relates to medical marijuana. We cannot zone those uses out of a municipality. They're allowed by state law. And because of that, the state then included restrictions regarding those, the location of those uses. Here, you can decide whether you're going to allow it or not.
Okay.
And since you can do that, the local control has been left to municipalities.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we ought to look at this as the same way we look at liquor sales, alcohol. I, I don't really see any difference between the two. And so if we wanna be more restrictive in terms of marijuana sales, then we should probably go back and look at our restrictions in terms of alcohol sales. Because I don't really see any difference moving forward. Like you said, it's here. Let's work and make it benefit the village of Cary.
Agreed.
I think, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just, you know, the discussion, I, I've talked to many people and, and there are people on both sides of the fence and I, and I respect it, you know. And in the sense of, do I feel it was handled exactly properly? Should it have come before the voters? In my opinion, yes, it should have. But that, you know, the, the time for deciding whether it's coming or not is, is gone. So it is coming. And I look at it as if we have to make wise, prudent decisions for our village. And it, it's gonna be here. And if people wanna purchase it, whether we, whether someone likes it or doesn't like it is, is, it, it doesn't matter anymore. The point is moot. As Jeff was saying, it's gonna be similar to, boy, if you wanna go get some alcohol, you go into the liquor store and you get that. If you wanna get some recreational cannabis, whatever, you can go get some fun fruits, whatever you wanna call it. So I, I just wanna be smart about it. And I, I understand what you're saying with the liquor. I'm probably being a little bit more saying, I, I wanna keep that 1,000-feet radius of just making sure it's not anywhere where kids could be exposed to it. I do know reading through the regulations about the advertising, what they can put on there. It, it's very limited, so there are some good restrictions on there that I think that are beneficial for people that are concerned about it. But I, I don't wanna take and have the challenges that may come along with having this without getting the benefits. And to me, if we're gonna bring it on, I wanna tax it as high as we can. And I, I think it's here. I, I just think that we have to work with what we have.
I agree. I couldn't agree more with what Trustee Kraus had said about, you know, I had a lot of conversations over the weekend with a lot of residents that were concerned about it and where we stood and what we're gonna do. And overwhelmingly, people were in favor of us allowing this, because why wouldn't we? It's, and like, it's just like going to a liquor store and buying a 12-pack beer or something. It's, the state is allowing it. The, the only thing that I've always said through this whole thing is that, you know, it's, it's against the law federally. At, at what point are they going to allow it? Are they gonna come in and they're gonna swoop down and say, you know what? You can't do this anymore. You know, just those are things that, you know, are, are out there. But, you know, I think that we need to be proactive about this and decide realistically where we think it would be more beneficial for us. I think when you're looking from, you know, I'm gonna talk a little bit about taxation here quickly, but, you know, this is a user tax. It's not gonna, the regular residents who don't participate in this won't have to pay this. And all the boards that I've had since I've been mayor have made the decision to keep our property tax levy flat. And at some particular time, it's going to chase us. And we're going to be looking at different ways that we need to raise revenue. And this would be a really good way to raise revenue without affecting property taxes. And we can continue on that path where we wanna keep our, our tax levy as flat as possible. So I think that this is a, you know, sometimes it's tough to swallow. Sometimes it's, you, you gotta take a step back and look at the greater good and what's gonna happen for the long-term growth of our village. And I, I think that, in echoing what Jeff had said, that it is. It's like going to the liquor store and getting what you need. But my concern with this is where do we see it and where do we wanna have it in, in the village? I, for one, I, I would not wanna see it in our downtown district. It's too family-centric down there. And I think that I would like to kinda keep that the way it is. And maybe we look somewhere offsite, maybe some of the perimeters. That's just my opinion. I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say. But, I mean, these are, these are tough decisions that we're gonna have to make. I know that there are people on both sides of the coin on this board and I'd like to hear what everybody has to say.
The downtown currently with the yellow map would be restricted.
Right.
Yeah, so I favor that. I like the map. I think the map would be fine.
If we were on board with what is being proposed here with this 1,000-foot buffer.
My preference is what we discussed last time and the pictures that we saw last time with having it in an industrial park. I like that. People who wanna go and get it have to go and seek out where it is. And, you know, the, it's, like you said, the downtown is a family area. I just, I prefer it to be in a, in an industrial park.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from, but as a, from a business end of it, if somebody shoved a new one in industrial park, it's maybe not the greatest thing for sales for them. Could hinder them a little. I don't know. It's, it's a hard one. You don't shove liquor stores in new industrial parks.
I, I think it's worth a discussion. We've, we're obviously getting calls from businesses asking, are we gonna allow it? These businesses are asking communities all over McHenry County and probably all over the state. And if you ask them where do they wanna be, I assume that 99% of them are gonna say, we wanna be on Route 14. We wanna be where the traffic is. I, I get that maybe we wanna put it in different areas that are off of our main thoroughfare in town. But I, I think we're either in or we're out.
I also think with how restrictive they are with signage and the look of the buildings and stuff, we can dictate a lot of that. It doesn't have to.
Yeah, that was one of the, look like that, right? Can we be more restrictive with the signage or is, is that with the First Amendment? How does that come into play or how it's presented?
Yeah. We can take a look. It is pretty restricted right now under the state law. It's extremely limited.
Yep.
So.
Those are, those are things that we can look at. Certainly, this will have to come back to the village board at some point here.
I, I think it's kind of the same discussion we had with the medical marijuana. And people were afraid to have it in the, you know, out there in the open. You know, it's, well, we wanted it in an industrial park. But that continues to perpetuate that, you know, dark, seedy nature of it all. You know, it's gonna be legal. It's, it's, it's here, you know? So, you know, why continue to try to perpetuate that stigma of it when it's a legal product, you know? And we can benefit with the tax dollars from it.
I personally think it's also a safety aspect to have it on 14 so that people do see, people go buy it constantly. There's a lot more movement in an industrial park. It's a little more shadier where for an, you know, right now, the, the federal government, the money and the banks, you know, the money doesn't.
On a policing standpoint, it's, it's 14.
It's a cash business. And it's more on the securities perspective.
Good point.
Well, that, that brings up one of the points that I wanna make. So when I, when I went through the slides and everything, it talks about the restrictions and the laws and everything else. But I guess what I'd like to know is places like Colorado that have had this already in place, what are some of the problems they've seen? What are some of the benefits they've seen? Let's, let's use them as a starting point and as an example. Instead of rushing into this and just doing this because we need revenue, I feel like we, I, I just, this isn't enough information. Also, the operation, it's pretty restrictive. Right here, I'm looking at it where operations prohibited when state cannabis electronic verification system is inoperative. Who's monitoring this? Are we, are we having staff monitor this? How often are they monitoring this? Is it taking away from their time? The other thing I wanna bring up is vaping. Vaping now is all over the news because they're now discovering all these issues it's coming into. And teen usage has skyrocketed with it. So how does this then translate also into potentially usage? I, I don't know. This is all brand new. So these are just some of the things going through my head as I'm looking at what's in front of us.
But the business says that their recreational marijuana sales will be kinda like liquor stores, right? Where they're inspected and can't sell the minors. And I'm not saying minors can't get alcohol or cannabis anyways.
Right, but I don't, is, is there a state person that's monitoring this or is it village staff that's monitoring this?
Yes. There are, there have to be active cameras on site. The monitoring, I guess, is based on the inventory as it relates to the actual sales data that has to be input with each sale regarding the, the user that it was sold to, the product that was sold, the price that was sold. It's more highly regulated at the start than just about any other retail product.
So it's something I read recently said, I think Colorado, on average, their businesses are seeing about $2.1 million in sales. So if you take the 3%, if my math is correct, it's about a little over 60,000 potentially the village of Cary can get. So it, it's not gonna save us in a lot of ways. It's, it's, it's some money, but it's certainly not the end-all, be-all to a lot of, some of the deficit issues we're facing. I just wanna bring that up, too.
There's, there's also the sales tax component. So it's the, the 3% is above and beyond just the, the regular sales tax.
Okay, so, so again, what, what sort of numbers are we talking about?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure.
These, I mean, these are just some of the things I think that we should have answers to before we make an educated vote on this.
True, but how are we gonna know? And I, I don't, I don't know the answer. It's how do we know how much is gonna be used? And just because we say that, that we would be open to this, doesn't mean that someone's gonna come before us and have one, because there's only X amount of licenses too in the state of Illinois.
Completely agree with you on that, 100%.
Until 2020.
And that's a problem. It's, we don't know.
True.
So we're kinda doing our best educated guess at this point. But I think that we do need to evaluate Colorado as a potential model. And that's why I'd like to know some of the, you know, pitfalls they've experienced, maybe some of the benefits they've experienced, whatever the case may be.
Well, these are good discussion points and gives staff some direction on what other information the board wants to have. But we need to start having these, these conversations and just, you know, keep the conversation flowing and get the questions answered to the best of our ability. I know that there are some social issues out in, in Colorado. I have friends that, that are out there and they're, they're seeing that. But it's also out on the West Coast as well. So, and that, that's relatively new out there, too. So these are things that we could, you know, kinda dip into and see exactly what's going on.
Also, one more point. I, for this store or what?
Dispensary?
Dispensary. Could we also put like a limit on how big we want it?
No, I, in conversations I've had with staff, I've asked, what exactly is the square footage that they're looking at? And I think pretty much like around 2,500 square feet?
Yeah, I actually spoke to somebody today that was looking at possibly going up to about a 4,000-square-foot space. So there are, there is interest out there. It's not a large footprint because it's more of a retail store. So 2,500 to 4,000-square-foot is probably the size you're gonna get in the high end. And from a comparison standpoint, if you're looking at a Subway, you know, store that's about 2,000 square feet. So it's not a large footprint that they would have. For the most part, you know, when we're looking at regulations as to, you know, try to, how do we wanna regulate it within the, the village as far as what are the proper locations for it? Hours of operation, things like that are the things that we can draft within ordinance to say, if something does come in, this is the standards you need to meet for it. And then, you know, the other answer aspects of it as far as revenue that's generated, that's kind of outside the zoning regulations, but at least that's the way you can establish in the code saying that if we do allow it, this is the locations that would be appropriate for it. And then this is a procedure you have to go through to get approval for, that location. So any business that wanted to do, for example, the drive-through restaurant, other uses that like that, that just require just a review, have to go through the same process. But we've already identified in the code, these are locations that we've determined that these are appropriate uses to go into. And then you And then, you can draft the code to say these are specific guidelines that this type of business needs to meet. And, you know, if we have a 1,000-foot separation, that's one standard they could meet. Or you can put more restrictive hours of operation beyond what the state requires. So, you can draft a regulation and say exactly how the village would want these businesses to operate, where they could go. And then, if somebody didn't exactly meet those requirements, there's the variation process that can ask for relief for those standards as well.
And if I recall, we have no control over the licensing. It's the state.
Correct.
So, we can regulate, we don't license.
Right.
And well, just for sake of discussion, too, there is an individual here that was intended, I mean, that is potentially interested in operating a facility in the county, possibly in the Village of Cary. He may be able to answer any questions he may have as well to discuss the operations of what he has, if the board has questions for him as well.
He's here now?
Yep.
I operated a dispensary here.
Come on up.
Yep.
Just tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Brad Zerman. I have an office at 330 North Wild Bastion, Chicago. I operated a dispensary downtown Oak Park for two and a half years. I'm one of the 55 original licensees in Illinois. I opened this store in 2016, right in the heart of downtown Oak Park on Lake Street in Harlem. It went, it went very well. The community accepted it very well. We were like part of the community, part of the downtown association, participated in health fairs in the area. I understand about, you know, communities not wanting to put them right in their downtown, but I would like, I would probably urge you against throwing them in industrial parks. Your points were spot-on, I thought. It's a safety issue. The buildings in industrial areas are generally way too large for dispensaries. They're more manufacturing-type buildings, just typically. I'm not familiar with your industrial area. But I would just, you know, encourage you to consider good, commercial, solid business areas where there is traffic, whether it's street traffic or foot traffic, because you have good lighting in those areas. And just because there's people around, it just makes it safer. There are just some of the concerns I heard everyone say here. The issue of banking. Three-quarters of the time we're open, we had a bank, and then we didn't. We still had armored couriers picking up cash in the same manner that they would pick up from a bank or a jewelry store or anywhere else. So, you know, we didn't have employees running outside. But that might be, you know, things that you could consider, you know, putting in your ordinance, tightening things up, you know, at the local level for safety reasons. Maybe you want to encourage armored couriers, just like other businesses, not just maybe individuals carrying around money. But the state, the IDFPR, the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation, they do a great job regulating this business. We had auditors in our shop regularly. We had the state police visit our shop monthly. And they always reviewed our, we had like 35 cameras in and around the building. There was no part of the dispensary that wasn't monitored by the state except the bathrooms. And they come in and one of you talked about the inventory control systems, and that is all tied in with the state. Everything with the recreational still will be that way. The auditors come in and count the products and, you know, make sure that you're honest with your reporting. And if you're not, you have to, you know, let them know. So, I don't think there would be much staff for you guys to monitor these businesses, just maybe how you would monitor your other retail businesses, but nothing special. They're all super-secure locations. I think dispensaries are the most secure buildings in the state, other than maybe the governor's mansion. You know, I don't think you have any businesses that have 35 cameras in them. You know, so I think, you know, and, and the other thing is to consider that you have other cities in McHenry County that are looking at this. I was at Woodstock a couple weeks ago. Seemed like they really want it, and they're going to put it in their commercial areas. So, I think, you know, you guys need to decide, if it's something that you want, then support it, you know? Put it in the good parts of town so that you get the right businesses that come in that want to put them in the, in the right areas, and they're going to do a good job with them. And my dispensary was, was just under 4,000 feet. I think that in a recreational market, you could do a 2,500 feet maybe, but that would be kind of small. If, you know, if I was going to open a dispensary, it'd probably be 3,500 to 4,500 feet, you I don't know. If you have any questions, you know, I also, I started a business in Massachusetts. I've got two licenses to dispense and one to grow, and we're building out those facilities now. So, I've been all over Massachusetts, talking to communities like yours. So, I have a lot of experience with that.
And is Massachusetts legal?
Yes.
It is.
Currently.
So, and, so it wouldn't be just like Colorado?
Yes.
So.
And, and I just came from Detroit. It's going to be legal. January went there, where I have locations tied up that I'm applying in a couple suburbs of Detroit. So, you know, there's lots of cities going through this process right now, like you, thinking about the same things. So, I think, you know, it's just like, if you want to do it, get behind it and support it like any other new industry. Otherwise, you know, it just, it won't thrive. And since you guys are partners in the business with the tax, you probably want the businesses to thrive. Because when you put them in, you know, undesirable locations, then the patients or the recreational users aren't going to want to come to it. Because maybe they can go somewhere in Lake County or some other nearby county where it's in a more highly-trafficked, good area, rather than, you know, kind of out in the outskirts of town where it doesn't really lend itself to retail.
Anybody have any questions for him?
Do you have, kind of piggybacking on what Chris had said, do you have any information like Kim was inquiring about? Is there any documentation out there that you're, that you have accessible that would tell us how much to anticipate in volume and so we could make some educated?
You know, I think, I think that they can do much better than the numbers I heard from Colorado. There's, you know, 500 stores in Colorado or however many. There aren't 500 stores here. There's only 55 right now. And the 55 licensees are each going to get an extra license. So, the 55 are going to turn into 110 wherever they go. We don't know where they end up. But then, there's these other 49, I think it is, for the general Chicago land area, including this county. So, you could get more than one in this area if you allowed it. Or you could put a cap, like someone suggested, if you want to see less. And then, you know, then you, I don't know all the laws. Your attorney could help you with that. But, you know, maybe then you could have your own little contest here. If you had five people that wanted to open, but you only want to allow two, then maybe you need to determine how are you going to handle those at your, at the zoning level, you know? So, those are maybe some other things to think about. We, we started in, you know, a super-restrictive medical program with hardly any patients when we opened. There were probably like 20,000 patients. And then, I sold the business in February, and we had about 50,000 patients there. We were doing about 3.5 million in sales. But I had one of the best dispensaries in the state. So, you know, the Chicago ones probably did like 5 to 7 million in sales, you know, in the more recent year. You know, but there's less people out here. So, that, you know, the 2.5 could be a solid number in McHenry County, but in a rec market, maybe it's 5 million.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
And Brian knows how to reach me if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? We talked about industrial parks. I think of the industrial park off of industrial, and there's a bar over there. We've got a gymnastics center not too far from there. And we don't worry about issues or anything like that as far as safety. So, if there is going to be, I wouldn't treat any other business any differently.
Anybody else have anything they want to talk about right now? I mean, this is, these are, we're going to have a couple more of these conversations. So, you know.
And I just, I also like to get the perspective from Chief Finland, too, and his thoughts on it.
I think we know his thoughts on it. Did you want to chime in a little bit here?
I think you've already discussed a lot of areas that I'm concerned about. I'd prefer it be locally regulated versus state regulated.
I'm with you. I think these questions are important, though, that we, if we get to that next level, we have to talk about what are the hours of operation, you know? Do we want to keep, you know, restricted from residential? You know, to me, those are, some of those are like absolutely yes, those are non-negotiables. Certain things need to be. I don't think we want it anywhere close to residential.
Would the village board like this to go to our Board of Zoning Plan and Appeals for a public hearing?
Yeah. I do.
Is the majority of the board in support of allowing this in the community?
Yes.
No.
I think that there's, yeah, from, there is a general consensus, 5 to 1. I'd like to see it go to zoning and see what they have to say about it. Simultaneously, we can have discussions.
And the zoning makes it go to a public hearing.
And what other parameters here, Director Simmons, would, would you like to be able to take this to the Board of Zoning Plan and Appeals?
So, general question is from the zoning map that you had before you. What staff was showing on this map is the B2 and B3 districts from a commercial district standpoint. That's the majority of retail districts. It does not include the downtown area, which is zone B1, and does not include the mixed commercial residential area along 14, which is the B3R district, and then only incorporates the M district. So, is the board generally in favor of those districts as presented, or do you want to see other districts added or subtracted from that?
I'd love to add one more thing.
Why don't we, why don't we get this answer first here?
Hold on just one second.
Bear with my ignorance here. Where's the B3R?
B3R is the district that's from essentially First Street until the interstate, the traffic signal at Main, East Main and 14. So, where the Cary Bank Trust building, those properties are along 14 that hug both sides, there are B3R.
Okay.
But generally, these are most of the districts that allow most of our commercial operations.
I think these are the right districts they have selected if we, if we choose to go forward.
And then, from a similar question is looking at the restriction area as shown on the exhibit as a thousand, you know, foot distance. Is that something the board is in favor of? Would you like to see that decreased or kept at 1,000 feet or eliminated entirely?
I'm okay with 1,000 feet.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, too.
I do.
That should be more. I think 1,500.
How?
Can you, can you do a map with different ranges on it? Let us see.
We can do 500, 1,000, 1,500.
And we can debate that at the zoning board then? Yeah. Anything else, Director Simmons, that we needed?
Because our, how does this work with some of the houses that back up to the industrial park there?
I'm sorry?
I'm thinking about that, too.
I said, how does it, how, how does this work with the houses?
On Simran.
Thank you. That actually back up to like that purple area along industrial.
You can create buffers from residential as well, if that's your preference. So, so you don't, it doesn't just have to be with the local regulatory authority you have, it doesn't just have to be schools, what it just uses.
Know what I mean.
You can indicate from the, the adjacent border of a residential area that you are looking for a certain buffer, if that's your preference.
But if you do that, don't you knock out all of Jewel and everything with the new area going in?
Start to, yeah. Because if you, if you put a buffer next to residential area, say it's 100 feet, whatever that would be from property line, you have the Westlake subdivision that would eliminate the 14 frontage where the Westlake shopping center is at, and also the Bright Oaks subdivision would eliminate the Cary Square shopping center. But we can, if that's something that the board would want us to explore, we can put together a map that would show that as well.
I, I think we want to be cautious on that. Again, I go back to what I said previously. I think we're, we're either in or we're out on this. I mean, if we're in on it, I think we need to be all in and offer an opportunity in town. If we have reservations about it, then we should just say no.
I'm good with the map. As it is.
I'm, I'm fine with the map the way it is.
I am, too. I am, too.
You're fine with the map, too?
Yes. Wonder if those residents along there.
Well, here, I was just going to say, Scott had, I, I really perked up when you had mentioned that, because I had thought about the residential areas, and I wasn't looking at Simran specifically, because I was looking at some of the other ones that are closer. But we can buffer this. We can say maybe on the other side of Industrial Drive, I guess it would be the north side of Industrial Drive.
It would have to be property zone for a specific use. So, if you were to restrict it, just looking at the Simran subdivision, those are properties that directly abut those properties. But if you put a restriction of 100 feet or whatever that may be from a residential zone property.
That would exclude all of those.
Yeah, you're also looking at, I mean, the property next to, you know, the Cambria subdivision. So, the, the Damish property on Route 30, Run Frontage would potentially be eliminated. You'd also have the industrial park down at Cary Point Drive would be more significantly reused, because you have the residential in the Cary Woods subdivision, the townhouse development right next to Public Works. You also have the single-family homes by the river that would start to eliminate a lot of the areas that are shown as allowable here. But certainly, if you put together an exhibit that would show what the impacts would be for that.
Yeah.
Just for reference. But you would start to eliminate a lot of properties that would be allowed.
And just relative to a buffer, depending on how you structure a buffer, the buffer could simply push these uses back into a manufacturing district further from the residential area. It doesn't necessarily, if it's within 100 feet of residential, that all of the manufacturing district that adjoins that property is excluded. It would only be that 100-foot buffer.
Correct.
Or whatever it.
Correct. So, yeah, an example that's looking at the Goddard School, that's probably the easiest one to look at, because you have a circle by itself.
Right.
That doesn't touch anything else. But you can see where it goes into a portion of the Stryker property, where the eastern half of that property is eliminated, that a use couldn't go there. But on the western half, that could happen with the, that restriction from a daycare facility. If you had a similar restriction around residential areas, it would start to encroach on the industrial area, but would not eliminate the entire area, depending on what that distance is for that. And there are other provisions you can do, too, within the ordinance, that if it's located on a property directly next to residential, the ordinance can require you to provide additional screening or landscaping between the two properties, so that it may not restrict it per se. But you can require additional landscaping be provided that would buffer that use from the adjacent property, so that it mitigates any negative impacts on the surrounding property.
Or additional security measures that you may not otherwise require.
Can I make a little bit more tolerable for you, trustee Cavalli? No?
Wait, if you've got young kids that live right there, I just, you know, I.
I like the 150, 100, 150-foot buffer or something that would push it away from any type of a residential. Brian, I think you understand that, what the board is trying to say, and you can relay that to the zoning board.
Certainly, we can draft regulations kind of based off kind of what the state has allowed and also kind of based on the discussion this evening here. Present that for the ZPA for public discussion. ZPA can provide feedback. Public can as well. And then, whatever comes out of that would be recommended at this level. And certainly, we can have a dialogue to find out what are the best parameters for this type of uses.
I just don't feel that somebody's going to choose an industrial location when they have the option of 14. And I understand the buffers can put there, but if we're opening up 14, why would you choose Industrial Drive?
I think just trying to get.
I know there's a bar there already, but.
I think trying to be tidy and keep it.
Yeah, keep it off.
Yeah. If we're going to do it, we might as well do it the way it's going to work.
Jump in.
But I, yeah, I think this is a great, I mean, really our first in-depth conversation on this. We got a lot of, Brian, you had a lot of takeaways from this.
I liked, Brad wanted to add something, I think, too.
Did you want to come up, sir?
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you a little perspective and maybe a point of reference on the radius around different kinds of land uses. I don't know if anyone read today, Mayor Lightfoot announced Chicago zoning. Anyone catch that?
No.
So, as you know, in the medical, originally in 2014, the law provided a thousand feet from daycares and schools, not religious organizations, daycares and schools. That's really a tough, you know, challenge for a business owner. A thousand feet, like in the city of Chicago, is about four and a half blocks, just to give you a perspective. So, you know, I understand that, like, you don't want maybe kids being outside and having a line of people, you know, outside the dispensary trying to get in, in the way of the kids, but 500 feet seems to be more of a realistic number that I've seen many cities adopt in Illinois and Michigan and Massachusetts. So, I just want to put that out there, that the 500 number seems to be a lot more adopted. Chicago decided today that it's 500 feet only from schools, daycares are dropped, and religious organizations were never part of it. So, that's Chicago, just for whatever that's worth. You know, just as you continue to make the radiuses bigger, it's almost impossible to find real locations.
Thank you. Any other direction or questions you want to have? I think we got enough going on right now. All right, thank you. Next, we have annual stormwater public meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, as part of our permit for our operation of the municipal separate stormwater system, also known as the MS4 program, we are required to host a public meeting in order to provide the public an opportunity to comment on matters related to stormwater, and we also take that as an opportunity for staff to provide some updates on very strenuous projects that we have ongoing throughout the village. As you're probably aware, just reading the news, flooding and stormwater management is very prevalent. Oftentimes, it's frequently in the news. As recently as last week, we had heavy rain events that caused some flooding in some neighboring communities. Luckily, not very many big impacts here in Kerry, but it's still a reality that heavier rains are more frequent and more common these days. Two of the bigger events in recent history for McHenry County were 2013 and 2017, and just a couple of the news articles that you can grab pretty easily to help recall some of the issues that Kerry and all of Chicagoland faced. Last week, McHenry County hosted the McHenry County Water Forum. The water, groundwater resources departments used that as an opportunity to educate the public and provide some information for municipal agencies as well. As a certified community to regulate stormwater management in McHenry County, the village of Kerry was required to send its enforcement officer to the training, so staff, not just myself, but Courtney and Assistant Director John Stein also attended, and building's only official, John Fitch. So, we got a good breadth of experience in all the different disciplines that are affected by stormwater and review of stormwater permitting. At the forum, they, one of the slides that they displayed here does kind of capture the reality of what we're facing here with regards to drainage, that over the last hundred years, the mean average for annual rainfall in Illinois was about a little over 37 inches. But in the last 20 years, so since the year 2000, you can see the red line there is well above the historical average. So, the amount of rainfall we're getting is more, more in total, and you can see the spikes for different years. The frequency of the extreme events, the stream seasons, is also becoming a lot more common. So, in response to that, the Village Board and the village of Kerry was very proactive in 2017, following that last rain event, to do a village-wide flooding analysis, which enabled us to compile a list of projects that had shown some need in the recent flood events and historical flood events, and get some conceptual cost estimates and solutions to those designs, so that they could be placed into our multi-year capital improvement program, just awaiting funding and prioritization. With the approval of the current fiscal year budget, the three projects from that flooding study, which are highlighted in green, have started construction and are nearly complete on two of them, and the third one is in the final stretch towards final permitting from IDNR and getting released for bid. So, we, number three, project number three was the installation and replacement of a drywall at the corner of Lloyd and Sandra in the center of town. Project four was the replacement of a storm structure in the retention, detention area at Noddy Pine Park, that's south of Three Oaks Road. Those two projects, like I mentioned, are substantially complete and will be finished 100% within the next few weeks. Project number 13 is the replacement and enlargement of the Culver Benny Spring Street at the Kerry Creek Crossing by the Country Club. That's a project, as I mentioned, is in the final permitting phases, and we're hoping to release it for, to get awarded for construction and start this fall. McHenry County also, through their emergency management agency, in addition to their planning and development team, has a lot of resources out there with regards to flooding and flooding response. They have an app that people can download on their personal devices that allows you a lot of resources and information, but also has an important function to allow you to report flooding and non-flooding damages, which is very crucial in getting that data together as a county and as a region, to make sure that if we do have significant issues, that we have enough damage reported to be eligible for federal disaster declarations and federal disaster aid. The village of Kerry was a recipient of such disaster aid with the Sunset Crest project and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding that paid for all of the improvements down at that corner. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Yikes.
Yikes.
Yeah, 2013 was eye-opening when it came to that. This is a big deal right now in the state of Illinois. As you, as I might have mentioned, I think I put it in one of my reports that I was appointed to the Illinois Stormwater Commission. So, I went to their first meeting last week, it's ridiculous, I mean, the amount of stormwater issues that are in this state, especially up in McHenry County. So, the commission is to look for ways that we could troubleshoot these things, come up with funding, and solid solutions to remedy these situations. But it's ridiculous, the amount of flooding that is occurring in the state. So, any other comments or questions about this?
And we revisit this with the budget process. As I mentioned, our current CIP has about almost $11 million in funded and mostly unfunded projects in the list. And of course, each year, we respond to different reports from residents or other observations, and the list does continue to evolve and grow. But I'm happy to report that we are chipping away at it with these first three, first three projects.
All right, thank you very much, Eric. Now to an update regarding the park property, you want to start this off?
Yeah, absolutely. We have some, I would say, very exciting news. It's taken a long time to get here. Appreciate all the hard work, patience. I talked with our village attorney here earlier today, and we have the closing of the property that's set up for this Friday at 9:00 AM.
Yay!
And we have some nice pictures, too, here to show of what the, because I'm sure no one's going out there, since it's still private property. We plan, if closing goes according to our schedule here, we plan to open the property up that Friday, and so it would be open this weekend for our residents. We have a ribbon-cutting dedication that's scheduled for next Tuesday, so a week from today. All of the community is invited at 5:00 PM out on the site, so we're going to be sending out invites for that tomorrow. It's a beautiful property, it's going to be a tremendous asset for the village now and now, but many years to come. Appreciate all the work that our current staff did on that for many years here, appreciate the work that this village board did on this property, appreciate the vision foresight from previous elected officials. It takes a long time to see your hard work come to fruition, and this is a perfect example of that. And so, now that we're ready to open it, we need to figure out a name. The village of Kerry, I sent out to the village board previously, was approached by the Rotary. We currently have parks in town named after other nonprofit agencies, J.C.'s at Lyons Park. The Rotary, that's very active in the community, has expressed some interest in having the park be named Rotary Park. Village staff thinks that this is a great idea, it's a win for the Rotary, it's a win for the village, it's a win for our residents. Chuck Barrett is here, and Chuck, we appreciate your patience, I'm sure you learned a lot more tonight than you were expecting to learn.
I love it, I love it, it's great.
But Chuck had sent out an email, met with the mayor last week, here to go over kind of the vision, even with that name, the Rotary is interested in being active on that site. A lot of stuff, it's tentative, but they have plans to potentially partner on some projects out there here, a vision for the site. And so, turn it over to Chuck, I've got the email that Chuck had sent to the village, passed that out to the village board, you've had an opportunity to read that, I'm sure, which talks about what the Rotary does here in the community and kind of their vision for that site.
Sure, yeah. And basically, January 1st is going to be our 50-year anniversary of the club here in town. So, we were trying to come up with something that, you know, would be great, big and exciting. And at our farmer's market, which is also a brainstorming session for many of our members, they said, hey, how about a partnership with the village and do things out here and make this park really special? And so, kicking around ideas like a pavilion, additional seating, landscaping, those type of things. So, in the past, we've built things like the ban shell at Lyons Park, and recently, we just planted a bunch of trees at the park district at both Caper and Lyons Park. So, we're capable and willing to partner with the village and make this a real special place.
So, in conjunction with this, through village staff, they're considering the naming the lake Kerry Lake at Rotary Park. It's inclusive of the entire village, which it's going to belong to the entire village, and pays tribute to a longtime nonprofit that makes the village better. I mean, they did a great job at the Main Street Fest the last, well, actually, the last six years.
Yeah, we sold all our stakes on Saturday.
Yeah, so it's good, the things that you do in the community are well noted. Does anybody have any questions for Chuck?
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I thank you for all that you do for our community. I just had a question regarding, I think we had an open house a while ago, and we asked residents to go ahead and share ideas on what they wanted to see the park be named. So, I just don't want to dismiss that as well, but I do love, you know, the Rotary being named after that as well. I just don't want to dismiss anything that we've done in the past and make sure that, I think that somebody had talked about Fox Trail Residence, it was going to be Fox Trail Park or something. Can you help me refresh this?
We had multiple ideas that village staff had kind of thrown out there, that was before the Rotary had approached the village. All that was very conceptual, looking for feedback from residents. We did receive a response and kind of, you know, sat on the sidelines here while we were trying to figure out, taking possession of the property. That's when, you know, the Rotary had approached the village of Kerry here with this concept. And from a staff perspective, we love it, we think that it's a benefit for the village. Like I said, it is a benefit for the Rotary, and it is a great win for our residents, because you have an organization like the Rotary. It's obvious here that they're very active in the community, and I imagine that they're going to be active in doing things that will benefit this park in the future.
I like the Kerry Park at Rotary Park.
I do.
That includes the entire Kerry.
Yeah, when we had this, the initial meeting, I mean, this is actually the second time we've had this conversation, I think you sent an email to staff about this before. I mean, it's really kind of forward-thinking to have another entity partner with us on these things that are going to be able, in the conversation that we had with the pavilion, additional landscaping, trees, and the Rotary International, I believe, matches the landscaping. So, we could, we're going to get more bang for our buck with the landscaping and trees that, you know, as you can see, we need trees out there. And it's going to be a slow, a slow process, but, you know, by working with the Rotary, it's going to help us achieve that goal just a little bit quicker by getting Rotary International involved in it as well.
And we're also hoping to incorporate, like, the Interact Kids from Kerry Grove to help, and also, we have MCC scholarships, and so, really be a community, you know, lift to get everything going.
I think it's phenomenal. I applaud the Rotary for wanting to be part of this, and I do agree that we have some great parks, you know, the J.C.'s, the Veterans, the different parks, the Lyons Park. I'd love to see the Rotary recognized for all the hard work that you're doing, and I love the idea that you do have great scholarships for the academic, for vocational, for the community college, and getting everybody involved with being a part of it. I like the, I would agree that I like Kerry Lake at Rotary Park or Lake Kerry, or however you want to word it, because I do think it should be inclusive of the whole town of Kerry. I think that if we get too selective, some of them might think, hey, this is part of a particular subdivision or something like that, and I think we have to think big plan and big picture, and what this property is supposed to be is, it's a possession for all of Kerry.
I'm going to piggyback on Ellen with the big picture. I really do like the idea with Rotary, you know, they've done a phenomenal job in the past, and move on forward, you know, to, because it's a big property, and, you know, I think they can do a lot for us. So, I like that Rotary name in there, too.
Agreed. People have been asking about trees, and this is the quicker way to get there. It was one of the complaints, try to cut trees.
Well, how would they know, they're not supposed to be out there?
Nobody. See it from the road.
From people's backyard.
Backyard, yeah. Their backyard, that's true, that's true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, appreciate all you do for the community.
I just have a question. I like it, I think it makes sense, but my question is, didn't we have the community vote on a name? And what was the name they voted that they liked? This was a while ago, do you recall?
I think it was Fox Trails Nature, Fox Trail Nature Trail, something like that.
Yeah, this is the survey that went out, that Mr. Direct mentioned, it included a list of a few deceased names. I think some of them are, Fox Trails Nature Area was one of them. There wasn't a decisive winner, per se, there was a significant number of votes for all of them.
How many votes were there? How many people took part?
A few hundred, or 300, maybe.
I don't.
I know, I'm just asking, I think.
Small sample size.
Small sample size.
Trustee Winehammer brings up a good point, you know, we surveyed the community, we asked them for their opinion. I love having the Rotary involved, I think it totally makes sense to have them involved. I just don't know if the name should incorporate what the community originally voted on, that's all, but I don't even remember what that was.
But I think if the community were aware of the financial impact that this is going to have in the partnership, I think that they would.
How you're saying Kerry Park with the Rotary or however.
Kerry Lake at Rotary Park.
Thank you. I like having the Rotary's name attached to it. I like what the Rotary brings to this park. I think it makes sense, in a lot of ways, we help each other out, I love it, I do. Just that other piece, though, are we missing it with those people who already voted, thinking that this potentially could make an impact? Maybe not, maybe I'm overthinking it. That's all I'm saying. But I don't even remember what the name was.
Okay.
I think the vote was more to kind of just give us some suggestions in terms of what people are out there thinking, and then we would kind of whittle it down and make the decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if I ever recall a formal discussion with this group at all, just some more fact-finding that village staff was doing. I would like to say, though, too, that, you know, I'll get a letter drafted here and follow up with the Rotary, I just want to make sure that in future years, it's clear that the village of Kerry is the owner of the property, the village of Kerry is the one that's determining how things are developed out there in partnership with some of these ideas that the Rotary has.
So, does that mean like an MOU or?
No, just, I just want to have a letter on file here at the village, so whenever, you know, I'm not here and staff isn't here, and, you know, Chuck and Dave move on, that there's clear understanding here that.
But how does that work if you're bringing in people to help clean up and everything else? Is there any, like, insurance issues?
We'd work that out with Irma, with our insurance carrier about that. A lot of the work that we'll be doing, we're going to partner with them.
Rotary is good insurance as well.
Right, I just didn't know, do we have to have some agreement with one another on something like that?
Those are things that we can work out with Irma, our insurance carrier, on those one-off projects.
All right, thank you very much for your generosity to the Rotary, appreciate it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn it to executive session to discuss personnel.
We don't need it, yeah.
We don't need it, okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
You're making sure you're paying attention.
Hey, I want to go into executive session, I'm kidding, I want to get out of here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have no nays.